Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, September 6, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application, if we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Dorimer, would you read our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who may provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is citizen participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board? Ms. Dorimer?
How's everyone doing?
Good. If you could just identify yourself for the folks.
Mary Dorimer, 162 Plymouth Street. I was looking at the agenda and I noticed that you guys are going to have discussion and possible vote to recommend changes to the following bylaws. And one of them is 4.1.1, three consecutive absences of any member of an appointed board committee or council at duly-called meetings shall constitute a vacancy. I recently sent a letter to the Select Board and to Mr. Fantasy regarding the earth removal committee and the three consecutive absences of essentially the whole board, except for Jim Nowen, and it was not enforced. And I think before we changed bylaws, we should enforce the ones that are existing, that the residents voted on. So this concerns me.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a liquor license hearing, request for transfer of license for 90 North Main Street Rashera. I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing that correctly. Corporation, DBA Carver Main Street Liquors.
The hearing's set for 6:05.
That is set for 6:05, and it's only 6:03. So, yeah, if you're... Sorry, sir, we're going to skip to the...
We're too efficient tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ewens, for bringing that to my attention.
Sorry about that.
So we are going to skip to the next item on the agenda, which is recognition of Maria Ellen McLaughlin on turning 100 years old on August 16, 2022. Is there anyone here from Ms. McLaughlin's family? Ma'am? Sir, if you wouldn't mind just letting... Thank you. Are you from Ms. McLaughlin's family?
Yes.
Look, if you just stop up and... Is there any... I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say, but what a tremendous achievement.
Yes, she's quite a woman.
Can you tell us what her secret is?
Red wine and garlic.
Anything from members of the board?
Tell her congratulations from all of us.
Thank you. I'm sorry she couldn't be here today.
No.
We are too.
It's our pleasure, and we'd like to give you this certificate from the Select Board.
Thank you very much.
I'm just curious, how many of our 100 years have been within Carver?
Ooh, I'm not sure how many, but...
Quite a few?
Quite a few, yeah. She moved, she was living on Pond Street, and then she moved to New Hampshire, and then she ended up back here.
Wow. That's great.
Oh, sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, but excuse me? Your email address speaking for all of this?
Have a good night. All right, now it is 6:05. So we will return to our liquor license hearing, a request for transfer of license, 90 North Main Street Rashera Corporation, DBA Carver Main Street Liquors. And I apologize, I'm sure I didn't get that name right. Could you give me the correct pronunciation?
Is it Rajshreya? There we go. Rajshreya.
All right. Are there any members of the public here to speak on this this evening? Seeing none. Sir?
So my name is Attorney Ian Hedges, here on behalf of the applicant. With me here tonight are three folks. Vishal Shukla, who's the proposed shareholder of the corporation; Warren Kopp, who's the proposed license manager; and Dennis, sorry, Dennis Keane, who is the seller of the location. Mr. Shukla has significant ownership experience, owns about three other stores throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts; and Mr. Kopp has about a decade of experience operating stores as well, or working at stores. There are no physical changes to the store itself, no change of hours. This is largely just a change in ownership. And the only other point is that there is a pledge of the inventory to the applicant's lender, to Rockland Trust Company. But aside from that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there anything you folks would like to say to the board? Questions from the board?
Thank you. I just didn't hear your last sentence. If you could speak into the mic a little bit.
Oh, sure, there is a pledge of the license to the applicant's lender, to Rockland Trust Company.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions to the board? Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything?
I just have a question. So can you say your name again and spell it?
Sure, it's Ian Hedges, I.A.N., and last name is H.E.D.G.E.S.
Everything looks in order to me.
Okay. Is there a motion from the board?
I move that we approve the request for transfer of license to 90 North Main Street, to Rashera Corporation, DBA Carver Main Street Liquors.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Is there a motion to close this hearing?
I move to close the hearing.
Second that.
All right. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, folks. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right. Next on our agenda is NGR Cape Cod Beverage Company, LLC, the withdrawal of a liquor license application. The board will be discussing and voting to retract their vote to approve at the June 21, 2022 Select Board meeting. Mr. Fantasy, do you have some information on this?
Yes, so that was voted on June 21, 2022. A motion to approve the license to NGR Cape Cod Beverage, Shoestring Road Wine and Malt, second by Mr. Carter. It was voted four to nothing. So since that time, they had submitted a letter of withdrawal, and they're not opening. They asked that it be held without prejudice, meaning that at some point, they can bring it back again and file another petition. So what the board has to do is vote to rescind the vote on June 21, 2022, to grant the license.
Okay. Is there...
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just have a question. I thought, I was under the impression that one of the reasons they were rescinding, they were retracting their license was because of the zoning?
Maybe, but they may file for zoning changes or something in the future. They're not going to waive all their rights and privileges, you know, before they...
I get that.
Quick question, but how does this work with regards to licenses in general? But when they say they want to reserve the right to come back at a later time, if somebody, another company decides they'd like to get a license in Carver, now doesn't stop another... Are there a certain number of licenses allowed in Carver? And this is, we're not holding one for this company?
Yeah, every town is allowed a certain number.
Okay.
I think at the max.
All right, so this one becomes available, but anybody can get it?
Yeah, this becomes available. But it's in a zone that it's not allowed. So it becomes available maybe somewhere else.
Okay.
They don't have dibs on the last license, if this is the last license.
Gotcha.
That's what you're asking, right?
Yeah.
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 Anything else from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion to rescind?
I move that we rescind the liquor license application of NGR Cape Cod Beverage Company, LLC, that we had approved at the June 21, 2022 Select Board meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Do we need to do it without prejudice?
Oh, yes, without prejudice. Sorry. Thank you. You're right.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. So our next discussion item tonight is Select Board goals. And this...
You missed the town TA.
Well, I apologize. Thank you once again.
That's okay.
I guess I'm moving too fast this evening. Our next discussion item is to authorize the town administrator to put together a working group for ARPA funds. And I think, much like other groups that we've put together, I think this board has talked multiple times about ARPA funds and the need to think about the best way to use them. And I think we've had multiple discussions before about putting together a group to consider different things. And any group we put together, Mr. Fantasy, or anything we put together, ultimately, the uses of the ARPA funds would come back to this board. The Select Board will be the final decision-makers on how we use the ARPA funds. So this is just a group to try to think on it and come up with some best uses for the funds. Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything?
No, I think that's a good idea. Made up of various people within the town, on boards, the Select Board, maybe the capital outlay, maybe the finance committee representative, maybe some others that touch the ARPA funds. And we'll put it together as a working group that can then make recommendations to the Select Board.
Anybody from the business community?
Generally, we keep it within-house on a working committee like that. Obviously, we can ask opinions, too, outside of that. The committee would seek opinions. But, you know, I think it's something you want to keep in-house.
I think the nice thing about having a working group is if an idea comes up for use and you need some other expertise or something, you could ask somebody to come in and talk to the group and get some different ideas that the people may not have, so... But I guess this is the first step, is to put this together. So any other thoughts from the board?
Do we need a motion to authorize you to set up this working group?
Yeah.
Okay. I saw move.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Were you going to...
Question, maybe not so much about the group, but the last time we had the commissioners here, they said that when ARPA kind of started to take more form, they'd come back and discuss ARPA funds in more detail and depth and what it could be used for. Could they come back at this point? I mean, if we're getting to the point where we're forming a working group, can we have them come back and talk to all of us?
We could certainly have them come back at any time.
You mean the Plymouth County Commissioners?
Yeah, Jared and them, they said, "We'll know more." And if we're starting to form a working group now, seems like a good time to get them in, to say, "Hey, if you guys are going to start brainstorming, here's what we've learned since then. If you're going to start throwing around ideas for your X amount of millions of dollars..."
I would agree. The new group should know the rules and regs.
Yep, and I think it's more, I might be mistaken here, but I think it's more Tom O'Brien than it is the commissioner. I think the Plymouth County Treasurer, he's sort of the guru of ARPA funds.
Well, maybe he could come talk. Because I know that if we're forming this working group, I'd like to have an idea of what this group is talking about. Because I think it's great to have a group, but I'd like to know kind of the direction they're going. Like John said, the rules and regs. What is this working group talking about, other than ARPA funds? Because I don't know beyond that what it could be discussing. So I'd love if he could come in here and talk to us.
Yeah, we can have...
I'm sure he would love to come in and talk. He likes to do that.
I'm sure he would.
Nice photo op.
We could certainly have him.
I'll set that up.
We could certainly have him. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. All right, moving right along. Now we'll get to the Select Board goals. And so this came from, I think from the last meeting, we discussed this a little bit. We had our Goals and Objectives meeting over at the fire station. And I think when we came out of that meeting, we had some goals that we decided on. But I think we need to sort of break those goals down in a couple of ways. Some of them are goals for the town administrator that should go on his Town Administrator Evaluation Form, that next year, when we do his evaluation, he gets graded on. Some of them are more Select Board goals, and maybe individual Select Board members' goals are important, but they're really not something that would go on the town administrator's evaluation form. So I think we need to sort of break those out a little bit. And when I went back and looked, I came up with seven goals that we, or priorities that we talked about. And correct me if I've missed one, or... We came up with Town Hall Technology, the ARPA Funds Plan, Solar and Battery Moratoriums, Affordable Housing, a full-time conservation agent, community involvement in committees and boards, and Select Board financial policies. I think those were the seven things that I identified from that meeting. Now, the Select Board financial policies already have a spot on the Town Administrator Evaluation Form, so that's already there. But I think the other things... So when I sort of looked at these, this is how I sort of thought of them, and we can certainly discuss. But I thought the Town Hall Technology is certainly a town administrator goal. I think a goal that we all have, but it's certainly something that the town administrator needs to be graded on. We've talked multiple times that the Town Hall Technology needs to be upgraded. And in fact, we authorized the town administrator to put together a working group to improve Town Hall Technology. So I guess if we go one at a time, is everyone in agreement on that? That that's something that should probably go on the town administrator's evaluation form?
Yeah, I mean, can I just...
Absolutely.
In general, when we were doing that with the gentleman...
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah. I guess I wasn't even thinking of it as stuff that was going to go on the evaluation. When he said, "Someone tell me a five-star goal that you have," I was really just thinking of it as a goal for us. So when I shot out my answer, which, I mean, I had said the, you know, fulfilling the intent of the moratorium, I was thinking of it, that's something that I think is our obligation to the residents. When I said that, I wasn't thinking it should go on his evaluation. That's just, that was my interpretation of things. If I knew it was going to be an evaluation thing, I probably would have said something else. So in that context, that's not how I was interpreting any of this stuff.
And I think that's why we're talking about it tonight. Because if you look at the very front page of the Town Administrator Evaluation Form, it has a spot for Select Board goals for the town administrator.
Right.
And that's why I want to define tonight what those goals are, so the town administrator knows what we expect him to...
Yeah, I just didn't think that's what we were talking about in that meeting over there. I wish we had had like a clear talk over there about it.
No, that's fine. And if we need to talk about it further, we'll schedule it again for another. But I guess are the five members of the board, are we... Do we agree that upgrading Town Hall Technology should be a goal for the town administrator?
Yes.
Are you unanimous there?
Yes.
And the second item is coming up with an ARPA Funds Plan. And I guess I also thought that that was a town administrator goal. We've clearly just authorized the town administrator to put together a working group for the ARPA funds. So does anyone...
I agree. I think it's something that is a goal for the town administrator to fulfill.
Any disagreement there? Any discussion?
We'll have a question. Since a working group was founded, does that meet your expectation? Like, is that a three right now?
I don't think so, no. I think the working group is the first step toward coming up with a plan.
Okay.
But I think that plan obviously needs to come back to this board, where we'll ultimately decide how we're going to spend the ARPA funds.
Okay.
No, I think that's just the first step.
Okay.
So if we are evaluating him on that... Because usually, it's from beginning to end. So basically, the town administrator doesn't have the final decision on ARPA funds. That goes to the board, correct? I'm just thinking, how would we evaluate him on that? I don't want to... If he just develops the subcommittee or whatever, this working committee comes up with some ideas, and then is he done?
I guess the way I would evaluate him on it, just speaking for myself, is that did we come back with a plan that uses ARPA funds in a way that has a long-term benefit for the town? And I think that's something that... Only the town administrator has access to all aspects of the budget all the time. There are things going on that we don't know that Mr. Fantasy knows. So I guess that's why I think it's more of a town administrator goal. I mean, we could be here next year, and you know what? There could be, he may come to us and say, "This is what I think we should do with the ARPA funds, but we're not ready to do it yet. We need..." These funds don't all have to be spent now.
Right.
And he could say, "This is what I think we should do, but we may not want to do this for another six months." But that doesn't mean there's not a plan. I think the goal is to have some type of working plan, that's all. I don't want to be sitting here next year and be looking around the room and saying, "What are we going to do with the ARPA funds?"
Right.
And I think that's my thought.
I think sometimes these objectives can be, it's kind of tough because you look at these and you say, "What is the expectation?" You know, it can't be this open-ended, you know, unmeasurable goal that he cannot obtain. So we should have something for each one of these that is, what is the expected result? Your statement before was kind of perfect with regards to something, an ARPA plan that takes these funds and, you know, and sets it up so it benefits the town.
So I was just going to say, so I think one way we'll be able to measure that is when we know exactly from the state treasurer how we can spend the funds, or county treasurer, sorry, how we can spend the funds. And then, when they come up with a plan, if we feel that it's proposed to spend the funds in the most useful, inclusive way, within our ability, under the law, then to me, it gets a five, because you can't get much better than that.
Okay, I agree.
I don't know if that's helpful, but...
But again, we don't have to come up with a plan tonight. All we need to decide on are whether these are goals that should go on the town administrator's evaluation form. I think that's the goal. And I personally think the ARPA plan should be a town administer, go on the town administrator's evaluation form. Is that something we all agree on?
I agree.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. The next one is the Solar and Battery Moratoriums. And obviously, that's something town meeting voted on. And we've now set up the Solar and Battery Moratorium Committees. They met, they met last week, correct, Mr. Fantasy?
Uh huh.
And I guess the question is, is that, is bringing, having that group come together and come up with a revised bylaw, whatever you want to call it, is that a goal for the town administrator? Or is that...
When I threw it on the board as a five-star, that was not my intent, to put it on his evaluation. That was, again, it was, I think it's our responsibility to make sure it gets done, to pass at town meetings. So I wouldn't have it on there. I think it falls on, I mean...
Falls on us?
Well, and him, too.
Okay.
It can't fall on the wayside. It shouldn't fall under the crack, not just us, you know, including him. But I don't think it should be on...
But it's not something next year you think we should be grading the town administrator?
I wouldn't think so.
Any other thoughts from the board?
Well, I guess I get confused. What happens if the state of mass doesn't recognize this moratorium? Does that mean that it ends? The whole goal ends?
Mr. Fantasy, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, it's still in the AG's office. You know, there was an extension that they needed to look at many of these moratoriums that are going on throughout the Commonwealth. And if they rule that that's a violation of the intent of Chapter 41, then that would end the town's portion of a moratorium. But the town zoning committee, or the town bylaw committee, may want to then pick it up and continue it on to look at ways to redo the zoning bylaw on it, or the bylaws on it. If that makes sense.
And again, there's two different moratoriums.
Yeah, and the committee's been joined to one.
Right, but the state could rule that we can't have one, but we can't have the other, correct?
Correct.
And also, we were informed by town council that there's not a lot of leeway as to what we can do, just because it's something, both of these, I think, are something the state is trying to encourage, so...
So what's the thought of the board? Is this something that should go on the town administrator's evaluation form or not? Is this just a goal?
I would take it off, but that's something that I don't think should be forgotten.
No, and again, we're just talking about whether it should go on the town administrator's evaluation form.
I guess it's one of those things where it's not like he's going to not discuss it. I mean, you have the subcommittee up. So that's where I kind of think, like what John was saying before, some of these things where, just because we say it's not on the evaluation, doesn't mean he's not...
Doesn't have to do it.
Well, he's not going to have to do it, because I'm not being evaluated, so I'm not going to do it. He's still going to do it. Because my question on that, it's not only with Mr. Fantasy, but you also have the town planner, the planning board. You have to get others involved as well. So if there is a delay, he shouldn't be penalized on that. But again, I think, like you said, he's not going to just say, "Oh, forget about it." It's not, I just, I don't think that should be part of an evaluation, personally.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we're in agreement here that should not go on his evaluation form.
So I guess that's the bigger question. So the evaluation, what things should be on that? As far as things that are 100% under his control?
Well, and again, you've seen the form. We all have copies of that form. So, yeah, a lot of, you know, it's personnel policies, it's financial policy, it's a lot of different things. But I think annually, the Select Board will have goals that they want the town administrator to try to accomplish as well. And that's what that first page is for.
If we kind of think of that before the questions, I think then we know, okay, that falls under that, and that doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the next item is Affordable Hou... Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Fantasy.
I wasn't here last year, obviously. So are these consistent with prior town administrators' goals and objectives?
They are.
Are they?
I think it was, I want to say 2015. Me, myself, and Ron Clark, who was chair at the time, looked through evaluation forms from several different towns and just kind of combined everything to try to cover all the bases. So this Section 1 is just, you know, you've seen the form. It goes down all the way to personnel, to communication skills, to how they interact with the state. There's a whole bunch of different categories. So we've been using it for a while. The only thing that do change are these goals up at the top on the first page.
I think the next item is Affordable Housing. I think, Ms. Ewens, this is one of your five-star goals at the meeting at the fire station.
Mr. Chair, I am willing to strike that as long as people are aware that I'd like to see that under the ARPA Fund Plan as part of the consideration as part of the consideration, because, um, I think it's that important and it's certainly a lasting, something lasting.
Absolutely, and we can have, we can have someone in, come in to talk to, talk to the board about affordable housing and what, what the options would, would be. But that's not, not, we're not gonna put that on the town administrator's.
As, as long as it's clear that I, I would like that considered under the Opera fund plan.
Alright, uh, the next item.
Well, can I cut, go back there for a second, but is, in order to make it measurable, right, we, is one affordable house considered meeting the goal? And I don't know this, maybe I should, but what is the percentage that supposedly we should be at in order to protect ourselves from?
Ten percent.
Ten percent, ten percent. So how many units would that be?
How many housing units?
Well, I mean, we're at about three, between two and three percent right now, so we're not doing.
So, so should, so should this, should this plan be something like to reach five percent? Uh, so are we picking a, picking a number?
I mean, I think that's why we're gonna have somebody come in and, and talk to us.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's.
See what we can, we can accomplish. I think.
And the other thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. The other thing is that I remember the Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, told us that if we were to use Opera funds for affordable housing, we have to use it for affordable housing for people that need affordable housing primarily due to COVID. And I'd like to add, in addition to being vets, if that's possible. And I know that we have a fairly big list of those, the Veterans Assistant Agent is, has said that we do have that available. So it can't just be affordable housing just for anyone.
Part, part of the tough thing, I think, about using the Aqua funds for whatever we use them for, is that the rules have changed several times. And I think they changed just, again, just recently. And I think that's why this, the working group is so important, because you have to, i- 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 it, it's a, it's a moving target.
Yeah.
And, and I think to, to Ms. Bogart's point, it probably is a good idea to have, have Treasurer O'Brien in, again, to, to talk to us about it. Okay, so the next item is the full-time conservation agent. And I forget who, who brought this up, was Sarah. So, um, what are your thoughts?
I think it's, um, I think it's a definitely a goal that we need, especially considering the survey results, the open space and recreation plan survey results. Um, I think we've needed it for a long time. And I think it's something that, uh, uh, it's not entirely, up to Mr. Fantasy. I mean, you know, we're gonna need the funding for it as well, but it's certainly something that he could implement. It's pretty measurable.
Yeah. But what are the thoughts on the, on the board? Is this a, a town administrator goal? Is it more of a goal for, you know, the select board, perhaps working together with the finance committee to try to find the funding for? I mean, I think it's hard to measure the town administrator on it, because quite frankly, if the funding's not there, the funding's not there. It's not really his fault that the funding's not there.
Well, that's what I said. Yeah, but, but, Mr. Fantasy, what, what do you think about having that as a goal?
So, I, I guess I don't like it that it says full-time conservation agent. It could say enhance conservation agent's position or something.
Because you had said you wanted to gradually.
My goal is incrementally bringing it up to a full-time.
Yeah.
Over several years.
I'm, I'm good with that.
But that would not be a, exceeds expectations that they didn't get to, you know, year one, a full-time.
Well, we can, we could change it to read, as you said, enhance the conservation agent position over time or something like that. Or whatever the wording is that you would prefer.
But I, I guess my, my only question is, is that a town administrator evaluation item? Does that go on the evaluation?
I think so, but.
What are, what are the thoughts on that?
Um, but then wouldn't any new position be considered an objective of the town administrator versus just if he feels there needs to be a heavier presence in conservation, that's just part of his overall duty?
Anyone else?
No, I think it might work because it was a big deal to get a full-time building inspector recently. That was a recent goal to up that from part-time to full-time. That was a big deal when we got a full-time one in again, so. So I think this could be an objective, and, and a pretty black and white one, an objective to, you know, in, in the end, let's get to full-time. If it's incremental, you know?
Right.
If it can't be one year, fine, you know, if it's an incremental thing, fine, but this is actually something that's kind of measurable, like.
So, so the prior town administrator, um, had that on his objectives as well? Change building to a permanent, to, to full-time?
I don't, I don't think that was a objective.
I don't think it was on this, but it was, it was on, we had discussed it as like a, you, we want you to do this.
I think it was a goal of this board, but it was not on a town admini- it was not on the form. We didn't sit down and say, yeah, you got a four or a five, or something like that.
But it was something that we had wanted to see.
Yeah, see, I guess, I, I see it as sort of like a goal of the board, but maybe not a, a valuation item. I, I, that's just my personal feeling, but I'll, if the board feels it should be on there, I won't.
Whatever the board wants to do. As long as it happens.
Hoffman, I think we've heard from everyone except you.
I, I can see both point, both sides of it, to be honest with you. Um, where, like Mr. Fantasy just said, the full-time terminology really isn't fair to him, because it's probably won't happen within the next year. But again, this could be one of those things that we don't put in his evaluation, but have him work on.
Yeah.
Well, so if I may, so I don't mind it being on there, as long as it's not pigeonholed to a full-time on any given year like that.
Would, would you be some, com- comfortable with a, an item works toward, works toward enhancing the position of the conservation agent or something like that? Is that, is that something that the board would be comfortable with?
Increase enforcement of the conservation, something like that.
Mr. Hoffman with that?
That's fine.
Mr. Fantasy, that, that work?
And I've always thought of it as a very important position anyway, so having been a conservation commissioner in my town.
Alright, so we'll put that, we'll put that on the evaluation form. And then the, the last item is community involvement in committees and, and boards. And, um, I, I think this is something that should probably be on the town administrator's evaluation form. I think we need to, you know, you know, I, I, I'm not talking about grading the town administrator and whether more people actually apply for a board or not, but I think we need to try to come up with some, some new ways of, of, of reaching out to the, to the public. And, and I think the town administrator, probably in conjunction with the new technology working group that we have going on, hopefully come up with a few new ways of reaching out to the public, especially where we don't really have a community newspaper anymore. So that's, that's not there. And, um, what are, what are the thoughts of the board on that?
Hey, I pitched you guys like a year ago, my whole thing about social media is the bane of existence, but we've got it and we're not using it. You got, I mean, I, I pitched you guys that thing, and I don't have control of the, the social media page, but that office does, so go for it. Put it on there. I support it.
Any, anyone else?
Well, I, I'm, as long as Mr. Fantasy is okay with having it on there, I think it's a, a really tough one. It's like, you know, how do we get people to vote? I don't know. I have no idea.
Yeah, and, and again, we're not talking about did more people sign up to be on committees and boards. We're talking about trying to put together a, a plan to encourage more people to apply for committees and boards, to try to reach out to people. He, the, the town administrator has no control over who, who will volunteer to be on a committee or board, so, um, is that a, a goal the board feels comfortable with going on the town administrator's evaluation form? Mr. Fantasy, do you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Did, did I miss any? Were there any goals or of the board that I, I missed? I tried to go back and watch the minutes and, and watch the meeting and, and catch everything, but I, it's possible I might have missed one. If you, if you realize I did, let me know, and we'll bring it up at a, at a subsequent meet.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything you wanna add?
No, no, I'm comfortable with that.
Alright.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so our next item.
Can I just ask one question? Sorry. Mr. Fantasy, is there something that you think we're missing? Meaning that, I know you've got X number of months under your belt, but do you think there's something that should be on here that you think is, is very important that needs to get done in the next year that we're missing?
So, in the, in the drill-down sections, the, for instance, communication with, with, uh, committees and, and employees and all that, that's in there, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So that, that I think would be a big one, that's easy enough to evaluate.
I, I think it's, it's early enough in the, in the year that if the board feels there's something else that perhaps we should talk about as an evaluation item, there's still time to get that on there. So might I suggest that when we go home, you take a few minutes at some point over the next week or so, look, and if you see something that perhaps we, we missed, you know, bring it up, but we'll get it on a future agenda, but, uh, uh, pretty, pretty quickly, okay?
And just one quick question. So, so we decided financial policies was, was not gonna be part of that, correct?
Financial policies are already on there. They're already on the town administrator evaluation form, just on a different, in a different spot.
Okay.
So that's, that's why I didn't think we needed to, um, include them as a select board. Cause if you think we should, we can, we can add them, but there, there's another spot on the evaluation form.
That included the whole budget process and all that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and that's something we're going to talk about at a future agenda, anyway, but.
Yeah, I think maybe to a future agenda point is that when we review the audit, uh, I went through some of it over the weekend and there are, there seems to be these sticking points that, that continue to get, need to get fixed, um, based from the auditor's opinion. So maybe we can work that into, you know, it seems to be attainable. It's, 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 you know, an item that you can address, fix, or not fix, but, but attack it.
When we, when we have that meeting, we can, we can also have an agenda item if something needs to be added to the evaluation form. Uh, okay with you, Mr. Fantasy?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Alright, so moving on conveniently, uh, is community involvement on committees and boards. And, um, and I, I put this on there because it, one of the goals of the committee, multiple people stressed this goal. And I, I think we just need to, Mr. Fantasy, perhaps task you and, and maybe Ms. Weston, we're trying to, think a little bit outside the box and maybe come back to us with a couple of thoughts on how we can try to, reach out to some newer people in town, because the newspaper's gone. We can no longer put a blurb in the copper reporter saying, hey, we need people for this board or that board, and whether we try to come up with some, some new way of using social media or, doing an email blast, or, or I don't know, may, maybe putting something on the council on aging newsletter, or maybe there's another way. I, I, some people may have far better ideas than I have, but I think we have a need for, for people on committees and boards. And I think we have to try to find some way of reaching out to people that maybe we're not reaching out to now. And, I, I'll open that up to the rest of the board. Uh, you know, those, those are my thoughts, but they're maybe far better ones from, from some other folks.
No, I just thought that, I, I've said this before, is that, you know, the, the retirement community seems to be, um, a great source of people that have real-life experiences that could possibly join these boards, um, as a way of just getting involved. I'd like to reach out to them somehow.
The key is finding them.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, you know what I wondered? I wonder if we couldn't come up with some type of, of handout or, or, or something easy to read and similar, that maybe we could leave in the town clerk's office. Maybe when people come in to register to vote or something like that, or they come in, they move into town, there might be a way of saying, hey, do you wanna get involved in your community? Here's some, some options that are available. And, uh, I, I don't know, just a different way of reaching out to people.
It may be adding something in mailings that go out too.
Tax bills, absolutely.
With an application, make it nice and easy to fill out and send it back, maybe on a card or something.
That's an excellent idea. Anyone else? Alright.
So you're already working on it, that's good.
Alright, moving, moving right along. We had a little time in this agenda. It was a relatively short. So I thought I would include a couple of, uh, possible bylaw changes that I think we should consider. I don't think it's ever too early to start talking about these and, it's better to get them out of the way early rather than wait until January and all of a sudden we're, we're going through ten of these a, a night. So a couple of these, I think for different reasons, became pretty obvious. Uh, the first one, uh, discussion, it's impossible vote to recommend the changes to the following bylaws. I'll just, I'll just read it. This is, uh, bylaw one point, one point two. Uh, seventy-five qualified voters shall be necessary to constitute a quorum at any town meeting, including special town meetings, provided however, that one hundred fifty qualified voters shall be necessary to constitute a quorum at any town meeting where any bonded indebtedness is to be voted upon. And provided that also that a number less than a quorum may from time to time turn the same. And, and we found out, I think at the last town meeting, the issue with this wording was that we, we started town meeting with a quorum of one hundred and fifty. We got past the bonded indebtedness, and then people gradually drifted out. And we found, I think most of us were under the impression that the quorum dropped to seventy-five after we got through that, that bond. But it, with the wording we have, it doesn't. It stays at a hundred and fifty. And I think, um, my thought here was that we need to, to turn to council and find a way to amend that wording so that once we deal with the bonded indebtedness and the financial issues, and once a motion to reconsider has been made, that that quorum can, can go to seventy-five. It doesn't stay at one fifty, so that we're not faced with, with quorum calls and having to come back and schedule multiple town meetings. And, uh, I don't, I don't think this wording was ever meant to have a hundred and fifty for the entire town meeting. I think it was meant to have a hundred and fifty for financial items. Um, so I wanted to put it on the agenda and get the, get the board's, board's thoughts. Mr. Hoffman?
So I, I think if we do something like that, we'd have to go hand-in-hand with having the warrant articles, all the financial ones up to the front. So I know sometimes we spread it out, and then people don't, you know, if people are there just for the, the money issues, we should probably put those all towards the front, get those out of the way the first night or, or the first couple hours. And then if people do decide, because I think you're right, what happened last year was, you know, some things got put towards the back that were important, but the major issues that were there for the meeting, people just left.
Well, and it's not all, all the money issues, it's just the bonded indebtedness.
Right, I'm sorry, yeah.
But, I see your point too.
Just a thought.
I, I just think we're managing to lower expectations, right? I think all of us want more people at town meeting, right? It was great having, it was, it was some hot items on last year's town meeting for the first day, but we had, you know, breathing room only at, at, at the first town meeting. It just seems like bringing it down is lowering the threshold, you know? Do we go to fifty in a year from now? And, yeah, fifty people making decisions for the town.
And I don't think, in fact, we were, we were faced with that a couple of years ago, when the state brought forth new COVID regulations and, and the board had the opportunity to lower our quorums because of that, and we all chose not to do that.
Right.
So I don't, I don't think anyone's goal, certainly not my goal, i- is to lower the quorums. I just think that this wording is, is not clear. And I, and I, and I think that we need to, to have council clean it up, so it's clear to the, clear to everybody that once we get past this bonded, bonded indebtedness, that the quorum will, will go back to seventy-five and not stay at one fifty. That was, that was my only goal in, in bringing this up.
I, I agree. I, I don't think anybody's goal here is to go below seventy-five. That's pretty low, but it's been like that for years. And it's just that question of getting over that one, one issue. And then sometimes we're lucky we have seventy-five.
And, and listen, I, I hope we have five hundred, not, not seventy-five. And, and I, I just, like you said, you get to the end of the night, you have two, two or three articles left, and all of a sudden you're faced with a quorum call. And you have to try to get people to come back the next day, and that's not always easy, not always easy to do. So, um, so if, if people are in favor, then what I would suggest is that, Mr. Fantasy, that you, uh, send this to council with the board's goal and ask council to come up with some wording that will accomplish, accomplish what we want. Is that, everyone okay with that? Mr. Fantasy, do you think we need a vote on that?
No, not yet.
Don't think so?
No.
Alright.
We're just getting advice, guidance, you know, voting on the language.
Okay. Uh, the next one was four point one point one. Uh, three consecutive absences of any member of an appointed board, committee, or council at a duly-called meeting shall constitute a vacancy. And so when this came to my attention, I, the first thing I thought of was, you know, what if someone's, someone's ill? What if someone's in the hospital or, or, or something happens? A- and they're unable to attend a, attend a meeting. Uh, it, it, it seems to me that, you know, I, I don't think, I don't think that whoever put this bylaw together ever intended for someone who was ill or, or couldn't attend a meeting through no, no fault of their own, should be off a board or committee. I think it, it was intended for someone who just chose to no longer participate. So, so my thought on this was there ought to be some wording, that, you know, it could be something like three consecutive absences of any member of an. you know, it could be something like three consecutive absences of any member of an appointed board, committee, or council at a duly called meeting, shall, I think, uh, I'm not sure what the wording should be, but I think it should go back to the appointing authority. I, I think whoever the appointing authority is at, if, if they deem it to be a vacancy.
At the discretion.
Then it's a vacancy.
Yeah.
But that way you avoid having, like I said, somebody who, who has a, a medical condition, and they're unable to attend a meeting if they wanted to. That, I don't think they should be automatically off a board or committee, and the way this reads, it doesn't leave any, any vacant, any, you know, any green, gray area here, it's, you're off. You're not maybe off, you're, you're off. So I wonder what the board's thoughts were on that. And Mr. Fantasy, I think it's within the scope of the article, um, that we're talking about tonight. Could you address Mrs. Dorman's, um, earlier comments, because I think, I think that's within the scope here, and I think that should be addressed, just so everybody understands what the difference is.
Okay, so a complaint came in, um, from a group, and I think Mary, Mary was one of them, or it might have been from her, um, asking that all the committee members, except for one, I believe, be removed from the earth removal committee, for, for, under this article, that's saying that they missed three, the three committee meetings in a row. Um, her, her take in it was that because they didn't go to the meeting to make a quorum, uh, that they, they, uh, they fall under this as being vacant, a vacancy. There was no meeting. I, I spoke with council, town council, who reviewed this, and, and, uh, a meeting that lacks a quorum is not a meeting, that you can be held responsible for not, under this bylaw. You know, that you can be removed for not going to a meeting that didn't take place. So, so that's where kind of the, the, the disagreement came from that. Um, it's not, they're not subject to removal under this bylaw for not attending a meeting that was not a meeting, was no meeting. Okay, so that's, that's kind of where that goes. I agree with you. I think it needs to have language that gives the discretion to the committee itself, because, you know, if it's something that happens, another COVID, or something where, or something, that shuts down meetings, or, or somebody, people got sick with COVID and couldn't go to meetings. Next time, it might be monkeypox that you can't go to a meeting for three months, you're in the quarantine or something. So you need to have that discretion within that kind of a, a bylaw.
And that's why I thought if you, if you just put some wording in there, say, at the discretion of the appointing authority, then it's going to come back to either.
And the appointing authority would know whether it was something that they're just blowing off the meetings, because they don't care.
It's basically going to come back to your office or this board. And, you know, we'd look at it, say, well, okay, you know, Mark, Mark's in the hospital, so I guess we're not going to kick him off the board, or, or, you know, Mark's moved to Florida, and we, it's probably a vacancy. So that was my thought, and I, I wanted to put it in front of the board and try to get ahead of this a little bit, and so what, what is the board's thoughts?
I have a couple of questions, um, on the flip side, as far as someone that doesn't show up, and that, because they didn't show up, that they couldn't have a quorum. So it's almost like double, a double whammy that the person didn't show up, and because they didn't show up, or two people didn't, there wasn't a quorum, so they don't get penalized for that.
Yeah, so a lot of times what happens is, as the meeting is set and you go forward to see if they can attend, and just like this board, sometimes you can't get everybody to attend a meeting. And with a smaller, a smaller committee, if sometimes if two people can't make a meeting, there's no quorum.
Right.
And they may have, you know, a funeral they go to, a wake or something, or, you know, something going on. So should they be penalized for that, because it was canceled in advance? You know what I mean, and another date set?
It's almost like an, an excused, an unexcused absence.
Yeah, I know, and I think that's where, uh, an appointing authority can look at and say, well, why were you out the last three meetings? You know, and, and, and talk to them.
Because I know there have been some boards and committees where people just haven't showed up, and then, and then nothing was done. I agree with Ms., with, with Mary, that on some of them, nothing was done, so who's the, the enforcer, I guess, of, is it the appointing authority?
The appointing authority, yeah.
Okay, I mean.
Well, it's, uh, the, the way this is worded, it says shall constitute a vacancy, period. Just means that they're no longer on the board, and you can then fill that position, if they miss three meetings that were called to order, and they didn't show up.
I mean, we had, for instance, on the Capitol Hill, we had a person that didn't show up.
Yeah.
All year, we never, we kept asking, and then nothing, so I guess for every committee, like, just, you know.
They're off it now.
But I'm just, you know, that's just an example, but I'm sure there were other boards or committees that have had people that haven't showed up all year. So I guess my question is, Ms., uh, Mary had said that, um, it hasn't been enforced, so who is the enforcer of that? For, for the various board or committees, is it the appointing authority?
Yeah, to appoint somebody else.
Okay.
In other words, you know, again, the way it's worded is.
Is that the board's chairman, uh, the board committee or council chairman?
Doesn't, it's not, it's not in the bylaw. It doesn't say who. So you, you, when it's, when it's silent, it defers to who appoints.
Okay. I just think there's some structure on that, because a lot of times people know, oh, oh, well, like for that, we, Capitol Hill, we just kept, kept going, and no, it should have been.
At that point, it was almost over.
Right.
You know, there's a meeting or two left, so.
But then you have some of these other boards. I just think if there's some structure on that, where we know who, after, you know, three, and even after one or two, they, they should know.
And, and that's something we could look to, to town council to include when they, if they come up with some wording, to amend this, is, is some more structure. Is that my, my only goal here is, when I looked at it, I said, okay, you could easily have someone who, just through no fault of their own, couldn't make a meeting, and it, it just didn't seem fair that they should automatically be off. But I, I think somebody should look at the circumstances as to why they couldn't make the meeting and say, okay, you know, that's, what could they do?
I think the majority, and I could be wrong, but I'm just guessing, that the majority of people that miss three consecutive meetings, it's not just because of a personal problem, it's, they either don't want to be on that committee, or they just.
I, I agree. I, I agree.
Because I think three is a lot, for three consecutive. Unless, of course, there is an illness, then, then that, that's a special case which should be handled separately. But for the majority, I'm sure the majority of boards and committees have had these, these things happen, those people just don't have the interest in it anymore. And that's, and that's what I'm trying to say, is three in a row, but then there's nobody that says, okay, that's three in a row, let's get rid of this person, oh, get rid of, but, let's take them off the committee and get someone to replace them. Instead, it just goes on, and Capitol Hill was a perfect example, we just said, oh, we only have another month left, it's okay. Well, no, we, in hindsight, we should have said, okay, this person's off, let's find someone to replace them, even for the month.
And especially where we're talking about trying to find new ways to involve new people and boards of committees, because there might be someone who'd love to be on that committee, but the committee's full.
Yep.
And, so, yeah, it works, I think it works, it works both ways.
Okay.
But, uh, is, is everyone okay with, with having, uh, Mr. Fantasy, reach out to, to town council and try to amend the wording on this to, to bring a little more clarity, and, 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 and just give, bring this back to the appointing authority? So if someone is missing meetings for no fault of their own, that, that there's some, some exception to that.
Yes.
So obviously, we would have to vote on the wording before we, we bring anything forward. Is that something, anyone have an objection to that?
No, but I've got an addition to looking at the duly called meeting definition. Because, you know, I, I, I think that you got to do the town's business, right? You just can't have, um, meetings getting canceled, um, for whatever reason, time after time after time, because the chairman here, he doesn't have a quorum. You know, so if someone's out because they're sick, the other person says, we don't have a quorum, I'm not going to go. You know, you know, there, there has to be accountability there, you know, it, because you could go on for weeks, months, of, of not having meetings, and there being no, no matter what the definition is of a vacancy, it's not considered a vacancy because there wasn't a meeting, we didn't have a meeting because nobody showed, you know, it's, it's, what came first, chicken or the egg?
If I may, usually it's, um, it's a vac, it's a, uh, lack of a quorum before the meeting. It's known by the chair who's pulling this together.
But if it's an important item, we do the rule of necessity, and you make them vote, you make, whoever shows up votes.
If you make it as part of not showing up because there was no quorum, but you didn't show up, then you're going to have a whole committee gone. And then we have vacancies on committees already we can't fill, and then you're going to have committees that are gone. Because a lot of times, people work, and a lot of times, things come up and they can't make a meeting, and especially for a small committee. Um, especially like three member committees, like the North Cabo Water District, say, or, um, it's, it's hard, all, again, all it takes is, you know, somebody's sick and somebody else has a way to go to. And it's like, well, we're not having a, oop, that's one vacancy, ch, ch, check that off, and then the next one, something happens, and then that's two.
No, I, I think the chairman should have an ability to gauge these absenteeisms, right? But, but something's got to be done with the duly called meeting definition. We, we need to know what, we need to lock that down.
I don't know when this went in, this, this bylaw, but it, it does need work, you know, it's probably something that was, put in out of a heat of a moment for somebody who was upset that, you know, that somebody was not going to meetings.
Or you have the people that move, and they, they, all of a sudden, they're just there, so.
But it's on the books, you know.
Well, alright, can you, so can you take these two and, and send them to council with the board's thoughts, and ask them to come up with some, some clearer wording that we can consider?
Yep.
Alright, so moving forward, we have our, our town administrator update. Mr. Fantasy.
Okay. So a couple of updates. Um, first one was the North Cabo Water District, just update the board, uh, that the membrane filters are in. They came in early, uh, which is a, a nice surprise. Uh, it, it revolves around, uh, one, one town or city canceling their order, which lets them available. Uh, same membranes that we needed, and they ended up shipping them out earlier than we expected. We didn't expect to get them till the end of this month, uh, but they're already, they're already here, they're not in. So they're still doing a little work on the, on the, um, facility. The, we have a maintenance order for replacement of a pump end, um, of the well that needs to be replaced. That, that's like forty-five hundred dollars. And that was due to erosion from iron that, that, uh, damaged it, uh, over time. And generally, they, they replace those alternately, there's the two, so they'll do one, and then a few years later, they'll do another one. So that's being done, and I, again, I had mentioned last time that they're doing a complete cleaning of the system, too, before they put these membranes in, so that'll, hopefully, once it's turned on, it'll run like a, like a Rolls Royce, maybe. Next meeting of the North Cabo Water District is Monday, September twelfth, at five thirty. So if anybody out there wants to go to that meeting, it's downstairs in the conference room, Monday at five thirty.
And we still have a, a plan at the next select board meeting, if, if, one of the things on the agenda is to have a joint meeting with the North Cabo Water District.
Yes, there's a, an opening, uh, we have application for that opening, thankfully. They, they already have two members, so out of the three, uh, so this will be the third member if, if they're appointed. It'll be another joint meeting with the select board.
Thank you.
Levin Green Street, that's the house that we had put an RFP out, um, that you may recall, we're live in July twenty-seventh, uh, requesting sale proposals. We had four companies that pulled the RFP, requested, and we had one return the, uh, the bid. The opening was on August fir-, uh, thirty-first, and the bidder is the Habitat for Humanity. So we are now in the process of reviewing the application, make sure that all the requirements are met. And once that's done, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow, um, with, uh, John Wood, Elaine and myself, to go over the final documents, and once that's done, I'll be sending out a letter of award to the Habitat. Uh, the next item is solar and battery moratorium committee. We touched on it a little earlier. The first meeting of the committee took place on Tuesday, August thirtieth. All the committee members were present, no vacancies. As well as members of the public came and, and joined in and watched the meeting, was televised by Area Fifty-Eight. I had explained the charge to the committee, uh, through the articles that were passed at the annual town meeting. And the, and town council, Greg, and one of his assistants, um, they put on a PowerPoint presentation about solar and battery storage issues, which was well received. Uh, Bruce Mackey, who was formerly with the planning board, was voted as the chair of the committee. Um, additionally, on our website, on the town website, you'll find a link to the fifty-eight, the Area Fifty-Eight tape, as well as a number of other items that were uploaded to the, to the committee, uh, under the committee section, under solar and battery committee. So if you want to go on there, anybody out there, um, go on our website and, uh, look on committees, and you'll, you'll see a, a tab that says solar and battery moratorium committee. And you can see the tape, as well as find these other documents. Next meeting of committee is September thirteenth at five P M. So that's, that's the solar. And the last thing I want to update the board, and it's, uh, is the budget process. So I sent an aggressive budget timeline to the, uh, finance director, and we met over it. And it's our collective goal to move the budget process in a faster pace than apparently it had been in the past. Uh, to get it, to make sure that the timelines are met. It's something you can evaluate me on. So the budget actually opens this week, so it's earlier than it's, it's been. Uh, opens this week, department heads, uh, to submit their budget requests and capital requests by the end of this month. So again, it's going to be an aggressive timeline. Um, I'm requesting, uh, um, a, uh, budget of, what's the word? Why am I not getting the word? Level funding budget. Level services, I'm sorry, level services budget. Level funding budget is the same amount of money, but with increases, you actually lose positions. But low, level services for the departments that keep the same services they have right now. And if they have something additional, say, um, police may want a police officer, or something, that'll be on a separate item. Will they request that? And then we'll go through what we have for funding and, and what the needs are, and kind of balance those out. On about ele-, uh, October eleventh, again, very aggressive, finance director will be working on the free cash closures. She's already started working on that now. Um, I'm looking for her to have something to me by mid-October, uh, on the, on the free cash. So we have a sense of what the town has, uh, in free cash, what can, what we can expect. On about November twenty-first, the preliminary budget will be completed and put forth to the select board and to the finance committee. So you will have it in your hands, uh, right around Thanksgiving time. And again, these are estimated timelines, so don't say, well, it was the twenty-second, and there you go, you, yeah, you're mad at me, no. So it's, it, it's, we're going to try and hold to these timelines. I have a department head meeting tomorrow, I'm going to go over all of this with all the department heads, and make sure they're online and they understand what the requirements are, and, and what my, my, uh, my expectations are of them, so. So that's, and I think that's about it. The, the finance committee, I, I will do their, um, budget hearings and meetings with departments. Um, sometime between December first and February twenty-fourth, and then by March third, that'll be, uh, in, uh, form for the town meeting warrant. Okay, so, very aggressive, um, done it before, and I think we'll be able to do that, so.
Quick question?
Yep.
Um, years ago, we used to have that second week of February, we used to sit down and have a Saturday meeting, and it was the finance committee and the board of selectmen and the department heads would come in and we'd just chat about the challenge of their budgets.
Interesting.
Have we stopped, I guess we haven't done that in a while?
We haven't, but I, might be a good idea.
Might be a good idea, yeah.
It was pretty informal, it was.
Yeah, and sometimes that's better, when it's informal, you know, and you can talk, and, you know, and, and kind of a working meeting. Instead of just told what to do.
It gave the select board a lot more insight into what the various department heads' plans were for, for the year. It gave the select board a lot more insight into what the various department heads' plans were for, for the year.
So, uh, just one, one quick other thing. So on October fourth, uh, the finance and I, uh, be meeting with the police, library, O and M, and inspection services. October fifth, we're going to meet with fire, EMS, council on aging, veteran services. And October sixth, uh, the emergency, um, Tom Walsh, recreation, town clerk, finance, and autonomous administrator. So those are all the department heads. Um, we're doing it in three days in a row. Get it all done, and then we'll start working on putting the budget together, so.
Sounds good.
So that's it.
I just have a question. Um, are you meeting with all the land use department heads, too?
Yes, yep. Yep, that's, uh, under inspectional services. Bringing them all. I know, it's a kind of a, a category that.
Anything else from the board?
I think it's a category how the, the budget is actually undone.
It needs to be changed.
Yeah.
Anything else from the board? You were, Mr. Fennessy, anything else?
Uh, no, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Uh, we have approval of the minutes for August sixteenth. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the minutes of August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous.
I'm standing because I wasn't at the meeting.
All right, thank you.
It's not unanimous.
Okay, the minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
I move we approve the minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Uh, we have the approval of the Pilgrim Man Triathlon Road Race on September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. We have a, a letter from the police chief in our packet about this. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Pilgrim Man Triathlon Road Race for September seventeen, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Uh, our next full board meeting is, uh, September twentieth, twenty-two. We do have an executive session tomorrow night. Uh, select board, community announcements. Mr. Carter.
Um, I just wanted to thank the, I guess, Sportsman's Club. I had the fortunate opportunity to go to their recent lobster and chicken bake fundraiser. Good time had by all. Just wanted to thank them for their efforts.
Thank you. Ms. Bogart.
No, I wasn't able to go to Carver Day at King Richard's Fair this year, but I didn't get any emails about the traffic this year. I don't know if you guys did, so I'm hoping it went better this year than it has last year. So if anyone went, I hope you had a good time.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman.
I'm all set for tonight.
Oh, Ms. Ewens.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the town clerk and the town clerk's office and all the pole worker, working people down there. It looked like it was going very smoothly today. Appreciate all that they do.
Okay, thank you. And I just, for myself, I also want to thank all the, the town clerk and all our election workers. Um, I think the, what happened in Barnstable this morning shows us just how hard of a job it can be. So thank you for all your, all your hard work. Going along with what, uh, Ms., Ms. Bogart said, uh, I think we owe, I think the whole town owes a, a debt of thanks to the folks that worked on that King Richard's Fair traffic, uh, plan. Cause I talked to several residents down there this weekend, and they all told me things were much, much better than they were last year, so that's really good news. I know it's just the first week and things can change, but that was, that's really good news from, uh, from the fair, so. So thank you to all of those folks. And just finally, um, adding on to that today, this week is a public safety recognition week here in Carver. So I just want to thank all our public safety workers, and, um, they do so many unsung things, I think, every, every single day that go unnoticed by the town. So this is a, a good, a good week for us all to, to say thank you. So thank you to those folks. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, everybody.